Good evening. Welcome to the November 25th, 2025, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. City Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Nichols.
Here.
Spanbauer.
Here.
Flom.
Here.
Builo.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Muggerer.
Here. Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Nichols.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have students from Perry Tippler Middle School here this evening to help us with the pledge. If Macklin and Jana wouldn't mind meeting me down in the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you to our students. We have Macklin and we have Jana here, both from Perry Tippler. If you wouldn't mind, maybe tell us favorite subject, favorite teacher.
My favorite subject is art and my favorite teacher is Ms. Smokey.
My favorite subject is literacy and my favorite teacher is Mr. Urber.
Again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for bringing them and bringing them nicely down. Thank you.
First day on the job?
Great.
Refresh your training.
Okay. So this evening, we've got something special. We don't do this very often, thankfully. Tonight, we have a process in front of us to appoint a new councilmember to the Common Council to fill out the remaining term of former councilmember Chris Lars. So the process for tonight, let me just give a little outline for everybody here. This information was sent out and just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, though. So tonight, we'll go through each applicant. And by the way, the order of the presentations ran the process similar to how they run the City Clerk's Department, ran it just how they do the election process and how names get on the ballots. They drew names from the hat, and that was observed process. And that's how we got to the order of presentations this evening. Each time, I'll call a candidate up. You'll give us a brief presentation. We're hoping for five minutes-ish, if possible, please. After each presentation, council will have an opportunity to ask questions of that candidate, if they so choose. We'll make our way through all the candidates, and then at that point, I'll open up the floor for public comment. If anybody has comments on any of the candidates that they'd like to share publicly, that'd be a great time for them to do so, at which point, once that's closed or once that part is over, I will then take a... Where am I? Let's see here. After, yes, after public comments. Thank you. We'll put the motion in a second on the floor to actually have a discussion. Council will. At which point, if council has any further questions that they would like to ask, they can do so of any particular candidate. Time for public, excuse me, time for council comments at that time, if any council members want to give commentary, at which point, we would then go into a nomination process, where council members have the opportunity to put forth a name to be considered to be voted for. Very similar process to how we do our deputy mayor selections every April. You need four votes to be successful in your appointment. If we do not get the four votes after the first round, there will be subsequent rounds of voting. It's also potential that we could close a round of voting and open it up for renominations if we're at a stalemate. And that process can happen. It's happened in the past. Sometimes it's been a little quick, sometimes it's taken a little while to get there. We will go through the process however we need to, to get to a council decision this evening. With that, council, any questions that you have before we begin the process?
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
For those at home that may not know, not only did the applicants, the candidates, all send us information on application to begin with, then we asked them supplemental material that they all sent us as well. So if you think we're not asking many questions, we may, I don't know, but if you think that we're not, a lot of that is because we've already asked the questions that we really needed to know and gotten that from the candidates. So just wanted to clarify that for anybody who's not familiar.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that. Council, any other thoughts or anything else you'd like to say before we open up and have our first presenter come on up? I don't see any. First applicant this evening, Mr. Jacob Amos, and then he'll be followed by Alec LaFieber. Mr. Amos, if we could use this one over here, that'd be great. And good evening and welcome.
Hey, good evening. How are you guys tonight? So, first off, thank you all for allowing me to present tonight, and I understand that for some of you guys, I am meeting you all for the first time, so I just want to say that it is truly an honor to meet you guys tonight. So I am here tonight because I care deeply about the city of Oshkosh and the direction that we're moving in as a community. And so, just a little bit about myself, I am from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, born and raised there. I recently moved to Oshkosh about two and a half years ago. And as I prepare for the meeting tonight, I thought a little bit about when I first moved to Oshkosh and what I enjoyed the most about Oshkosh. And so, as I thought about that, I thought about when I walked my dogs through the neighborhood for the first time, and it was certain things that I noticed about the neighborhood that really stood out to me. I noticed like on the electrical boxes, I noticed like the artwork that was on the electrical boxes. I noticed that the streets were clean. I noticed how friendly the neighbors were when I waved at them. So all of those things stood out to me, and it made me really realize that Oshkosh is a place that I want to call home. It's a place that I felt it was very welcoming, a very grounded place and full of opportunity, for sure. So my goal is I stand here tonight, and if I'm appointed or elected in the spring election, my goal is to ensure that all residents of the city of Oshkosh have that same opportunity that I have when I first moved here, or that same experience, I should say. And for me, that experience was having safe streets, a safe community, I should say, a community that's accessible and a community that's future-focused. So, living in other cities, it allowed me an opportunity to just learn about like different types of cities. And I understand that a city doesn't just thrive based off its infrastructure or what's on a budget line item, but it truly thrives when the people feel heard, the people feel represented, and the people feel invested in. And that is the mindset that I bring to city council. So over the past year, I've been preparing to run for city council. Some people can vouch that I even been talking about this since Christmas time last year. But I've also done things to ensure that I'm prepared for city council. I didn't want to just pursue it and not be prepared. So I went through programs like Leadership Oshkosh, which was a program that allowed me to learn not only about policies and systems here in Oshkosh, but it allowed me a chance to learn about the heartbeat of the community. It allowed me to learn about the people, the challenges, and, most importantly, the opportunities here in Oshkosh. And even just sitting on the adjunct or sitting on the board for Oshkosh Area United Way as an adjunct board member, that allowed me a chance to learn pretty much how a board operates. And I understand that city council operate as a board to the city manager Rebecca Grill, thank you for all that you do. And I understand that Rebecca, she acts as a CEO to the board. And so I feel like that prepared me a lot for this. And with that being said, whether I'm appointed or not tonight, I do plan to, or I am for city council for the spring election. I've already declared my candidacy, and I've also established a strategic plan to collect signatures of support when the papers are available next Monday. So I say all of that because I want to make it clear that this is just not an intention for me, something that I just want to check off my box and say, hey, I did this. But I am truly committed to serving the people of Oshkosh. I truly have a passion for this. But I also understand that city council is just not about passion, but it's also about having, being here, being present and being committed. And so I've already started making adjustments on my schedule for city council meetings. I've already had conversations with my employer to ensure that I'm able to be here and be present and be committed to the people. So as you know, with my background in finance, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration with an emphasis on finance, and I'm currently pursuing my master's in finance. With that being said, though, financial responsibility is a huge thing for me, and it's something that I plan to keep at the forefront of every decision that I make. And I also like appreciate things that we've done with the budget or even with the safety training center, getting that done at 10 million instead of 14 million. I think that's fantastic. Making affordable or creating a space for affordable housing, like we're doing with the corridors, like all of those things I truly appreciate and truly stand out to me. But I know I only have five minutes, so I'm gonna go ahead and wrap up here. I do want to say that I understand that city council is a nonpartisan position. So I plan, if I'm elected or appointed, to represent all members of the community, no matter whether you are a police officer, a firefighter, a teacher, no matter what position you have in a community, my plan is to be a voice and a representative and a servant for you all, if you all would have. So as I wrap up, though, I want to say, I understand, I do not envy you guys tonight. I know you've got a very difficult decision to make. I know there's 13 other people here that apply for the position, and thank you all for applying. No matter what happens tonight, I am committed to working alongside of you all and helping out in any way that I can. I'm just a phone call or email away. So just putting that out there. But I want to say, a vote for me tonight, though, is a vote for someone that is willing to listen, someone that's prepared, someone that is financially responsible, and someone that's committed to this community. So thank you all for your time, and I welcome any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Council? Mr. Nichols?
Thanks. It's really tough to go first, so I want to acknowledge that you went first. So thank you. I have one question, kind of in two parts. What do you think the biggest challenge facing Oshkosh is right now? And what do you think the biggest challenge facing Oshkosh residents is right now? If you think they're different?
Yeah, well, honestly, what I think the biggest challenge is, is it addressed both, and that is the housing deficit that we have. And I think that as we continue to work together as a community, I believe that we can definitely create more affordable housing for individuals and just housing in general.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't see any other buttons. Thank you, sir.
All right, sounds good. Thank you all.
Mr. LaFieber.
And then Mr. Larry Lowenschlager's on deck. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Alec LaFieber, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. When I was a boy, growing up in the village of North Fond du Lac, I always knew that there was more to life than the small world that surrounded me. I didn't get to go to very many places or experience a lot outside my neighborhood, so when I grew up and I started coming to Oshkosh regularly with my friends, it honestly felt like a haven. It was a place that was alive in a way that I hadn't seen before. I felt like anything was possible here. And I fell in love with Oshkosh, and I chose to build my life here. And I stayed because I know the value of the opportunity that I found here. I come from a family that worked hard but just didn't have very much cushion, so every milestone that I reached just felt bigger. I was the first in my family to get a bachelor's degree. I was the first to work in an office instead of a factory. And so much of that started with the opportunities that I found here in Oshkosh. I got an affordable education at UW Oshkosh. I found community, and now I feel like I'm ready to give back. In my job now, I'm a content specialist. What I do is I take complex ideas and I make them easy for people to understand. I lead education initiatives that support thousands of small businesses all around the world, helping them grow, work more efficiently, and reduce risk, all skills that I believe translate well into local government. In government, clarity is currency. When residents understand the why behind a decision, trust grows. I believe that I can help build that trust. Outside of work, I stay closely connected to the community. Recently, I've acted with the Oshkosh Community Players. I mentor with Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I serve on the Landmarks Commission. Those are three very different corners of Oshkosh, the arts, youth mentorship, and historic preservation, but all important facets of this community. Showing up in all of those different spaces has made me feel more connected to Oshkosh as a whole. And as I've grown deeper roots here, I've also seen how much the world around us has changed in the last decade. We've entered an affordability crisis. More and more people are telling me that they're struggling to build a life, and I see it in my own life as a young person and a renter. Houses aren't getting cheaper, groceries aren't getting cheaper, starting a family feels out of reach. Even getting an education doesn't feel like a guarantee of a stable future. So I ask myself, what can I do? I want to offer my time and energy to help bring this community together. I want to be a bridge between the city and the people who live here. I can explain issues clearly and publicly. I can meet people where they are, especially younger people who may feel disconnected from their local community. I want to help bring them into the conversation. Because being a community leader means being visible, responsive, transparent, and proactive. And I've already started doing the work. I'm active in conversations with friends, families, and neighbors, in person and online, answering questions, clearing up confusions, and talking with people directly. Recently, I've even started making TikToks as a tool for education about Oshkosh local government. It's where a lot of younger residents are, and for many, it's the first time that they're hearing about city issues at all, because someone came to speak to them on the platform that they use. It's opened up a two-way street where I hear perspectives and questions from people who haven't been given many opportunities to voice their opinion before. It's been really interesting. It's proof that when we meet people where they are, rather than waiting for them to come to us, we get a more complete picture of our community. If I were appointed, my focus would be simple, learning all that I can, keeping communication clear and accessible, and doing what I can to keep Oshkosh a place where people can build a stable future. I know the limits of the role. I'm not here to promise everything. I just want to be someone who asks good questions, helps keep the city on track, and communicates decisions in a way the public can understand. I know that better is possible here in Oshkosh, and I want the city to continue to feel full of possibility the way that I did when I first founded it. And I am committed to doing this work for the long haul, which is why, regardless of tonight's outcome, I plan to run for the full term this spring. But I would be honored to start doing that work for the residents of Oshkosh today. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? Did you agree with that?
It's probably gonna be a theme. Can you tell me, thank you for your comments, can you tell me what the challenge, the biggest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is and the biggest challenge facing the residents of Oshkosh if you think it's different?
The biggest problem facing the city, I think, is, well, it's affordability, but with the lens of we are in a period of national uncertainty where it's kind of hard to predict where our next source of funding is going to come from, whether that be from the state or federal level. And so it's hard to make long-term decisions when everything kind of feels a little bit unpredictable right now. And I think that that is a real challenge for the council and the city manager to reckon with. For the people, you know what I hear every day is just, there's not enough opportunities for young people, not like recreational activities and activities to get involved in the community and to be a part of something bigger. I think that people, especially my age, feel very disconnected and fractured. And I believe that, oh, I was going to say, the, there's kind of just that, people, at least my age, there's a trend of hopelessness, that things aren't going to get better, that there's a lack of community, that there's a lack of, well, specifically, there's like a lack of like events here in Oshkosh. You know, one thing that I keep hearing over and over from people my age is bring back sawdust days. So that, that might be one of the issues that the people of Oshkosh are facing. We need sawdust days back. Thank you. Thanks.
Council, any other questions from any other councilmembers? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. Mr. Lowenschlager, you're up next, followed by Mr., looks like Richard Kiraly. I hope I said that right. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. And councilmembers, city manager Grill, thank you for having me come here. My name is Larry Lowenschlager. I've been a lifetime resident here of the city of Oshkosh. I went to school here in the public school in Parokio, kindergarten, first grade, and Longfellow School, that's not there anymore, St. Mary's School, which isn't there anymore, I went to, and I graduated in 1978 from Lourdes Academy. Then I went on to work for the State of Wisconsin at Winnebago Mental Health Institute. I worked there for 34 years as institutional aide, was very passionate, working with mentally ill there. It wasn't an easy job, you know, for anybody that takes a special person to work out there. In the 34 years I worked there, the last 10 years, I worked there as the medical scheduler and the transportation coordinator, and I coordinated the medical appointments for the outside residents there, you know, that needed to go to the doctor. I also worked for 16 years as a union president out there. I represented 700, over 700 employees between Winnebago Mental Health Institute and the Wisconsin Resource Center. I served eight years on the state negotiating team for Wisconsin State Employees Union. We represented, and we did contracts for 26,000 state employees. In 2012, I was elected to the county board of supervisors, representing the city of Oshkosh District 19. During those 10 years, I served on several boards and commissions, so I know what the commitment is to the city council on those boards. Currently, I still serve as the chair of the Winnebago County Human Services Board. I serve Fox Valley Workforce Development Board, the Winnebago County Parks Commission. I'm on that board. And for the last six years, I've served on the Oshkosh Public Library Board. I really enjoy all those commissions and boards, and I really think we get a lot out of it. I've been appointed to, for the last six years, to two standing NACO committees, which is a national county association by NACO presidents. I currently serve on the human services and education as the vice chair. I also serve on the Healthy Counties Steering Committee. I'm glad that the city has in their strategic goals to continue to work in strengthening our neighborhoods and provide a safe and security and healthy communities for our residents here, because I'm highly invested into the neighborhood association concept. I've been co-chair of my neighborhood, Stevens Park Neighborhood, for over 10 years. I think Stevens Park Neighborhood is actually one of the first neighborhood associations that formed in the city. And I love that because it brings your neighbors so much together. We do a lot of different activities around Stevens Park. And I also, every month, I attend what we call the Neighborhood Alliance, which group, which is leaders from all the neighborhood associations throughout the city, and we talk about the things that are going on in different neighborhoods and how we can improve things and how we can help other neighborhoods and stuff like this. I do a lot of volunteer stuff. I did volunteering at day-by-day warming shelters. Every year, I participate in the Winnebago County Wheelchair Wash, where we wash wheelchairs for residents in the city of Oshkosh and even Winnebago County who can't afford to get their wheelchairs washed and fixed. I do that. So I think the city, the council so far has done a wonderful job, and I think that I could definitely be an asset to the board, and I would like to work with you guys and continue to move this city forward into the future and stuff like this. I really think that I can help and, you know, do whatever I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenschlager.
Good question, DJ.
Mr. Nichols, you want to go first?
I'm gonna ask a question. Yeah, and it's, what do you think the challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is, and what do you think a challenge facing, the biggest challenge facing residents of Oshkosh is, if those are different?
I think right now it's affordable housing. I mean, we have a lot of housing complexes going up, but they're not affordable. I mean, elderly or people on a fixed income can't spend $2,000, $2,500 a month rent. I mean, some of those fixed income people, elderly people, don't even get $2,000 a month on social security, so it's tough to do that. I also think that we need to look at our homeless population. I think we still have a problem here in Oshkosh with the homeless population. And I know, being on the chair of the Human Services Board, we've explored, we listened to a group from Green Bay that came down here to talk about homeless parking lots or whatever. We're not coming, we're not making any proposals for that yet or whatever, but we have a lot of families that do live in their cars. I mean, I don't think people really realize how many we got. And we have, not even just singles, but there's a lot of families, and they expect their kids to go to school that day, you know, after they've been living in their car all night long. So I think that's, those are the two big things that we need to do. And like you say, I love the concept of the neighborhood association. I'm glad that you guys are keeping that into the strategic plan, and I think that we could work on that and make our neighborhoods safe and willing for neighbors to live in our neighborhoods. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just one, I have one follow-up to his question, actually. Housing being a number one challenge, affordability. I don't, how much of that is a city municipal problem? Maybe the wrong word to use? Or maybe frame it differently, how do you think we could address that, or do you have any thoughts? Just, I'm asking to just go a little deeper on that idea. I don't disagree. I think everybody in the region and even in the country...
I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I don't want to kind of go into it, because I'm not on the county board anymore, but I know the county board this last month had in their meeting, talking about using the interest from the ARPA funds or whatever to establish a revolving loan thing for people to afford housing and stuff like this. But, you know, they, so far, they tend to back the committees, so they hadn't do that. But yeah, I don't think it's a city, but I think we could come up with some ideas to do something like that. I really do.
Thank you. Council, any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Lowenschlager.
Thanks.
Richard Kiraly? And we're gonna be followed by Eric Gums.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you about why I'm seeking an appointment with the Oshkosh Common Council. My name is Rich, Richard Kiraly, but you can call me Rick. Most people do. I've lived in Oshkosh my entire life. This is not just the community where I live, it is who I am. I've watched our city grow, adapt, preserve through decades of change. Now with my children grown and out of the house, I have more time available to dedicate to public service. I'm already, I'm ready to give back to the community that has given me so much. I'm not seeking this for political advancement or personal gain. I'm here because I deeply believe in a nonpartisan, community-based governance that puts long-term interests of Oshkosh in... I'm here because I deeply believe in a nonpartisan, community-based governance that puts long-term interests of Oshkosh and its residents first. My background is in healthcare, also patient advocacy and union leadership, which has taught me the effective service requires listening, collaboration, and making decisions that balance competing interests while staying true to the core principles. These are exactly the qualities that I think the council demands. The city strategic, strategic plan provides a clear roadmap of our future, built on guiding principles of transparency, accountability, equity, and innovation. These principles resonate strongly with my own values. A council member must be a steward of the public resources and representative of the entire city, not just the single group or interest. I take that responsibility seriously. I've studied some of the issues that are before the council. I understand that effective governance requires addressing both immediate concerns and long-term strategic priorities. From my research and conversation with my peers, I recognize several key areas demanding thoughtful attention. Housing remains a pressing challenge, and this is nationwide, not only Oshkosh itself. The city has made significant progress developing housing units that are currently in development, including the initiative step of creating city-led affordable workforce subdivisions. Studies continue to show we need more housing across all levels of the continuum. Addressing this requires continued commitment to diverse housing types, update zoning policies if needed, strategic planning between public and private partnerships. Infrastructure investment continues to be critical, the Main Street Bridge rehabilitation, ongoing utilities extensions, and the special assessment policies all reflect the reality that maintaining and monitorizing our infrastructure requires both financial resources and allocations of costs. The recent council action to develop a special assessment deferral option for residents and agricultural properties demonstrates the kind of balanced approach that protects homeowners while ensuring infrastructure moves forward. Our tax base and fiscal responsibility remain central's concern. I was encouraged to see that the 2026 budget approval with the reduced tax levy, potentially lowering property taxes for residents. However, I recognize that ongoing challenges the state underfunding can be an issue. Economic development momentum in the Sawdust, Sawdust State District, along with the Oshkosh Avenue Corridor and throughout the downtown demonstrates real progress. The transformation from industry-like mixed-use redevelopment with other areas of Oshkosh. Continuing with this momentum while enduring development remains accessible and streamlined will be essential. My vision looking at five years, I see Oshkosh continuing to emerge as a thriving hub in the Fox Valley, a community where residents, families, and business have genuine opportunity to prosper. I envision our downtown and waterfront areas fully revitalized as vibrant destinations that honor our heritage while embracing innovation. I see neighborhoods strengthen throughout expanded housing options, improved infrastructure, and empowered neighborhood associations that give residents meaningful voice in their community. I see continued smart investment in infrastructure that makes Oshkosh safer, more accessible, and better connected. Improved streets, enhanced transit options, expanded bicycle and pedestrian networks, and modernized facilities that serve our residents efficiently. I see economic development that creates families supporting jobs, expanding our tax base, and positions Oshkosh as a regional economic engine. Perhaps most importantly, I see the city government that remains transparent, responsive, and accountable. One that makes data-driven decisions while engaging residents in the process. This is the Oshkosh I'm committed to help build. What can I bring to this role? My personal commitment, commitment to sustainability. This is just not rhetoric. I do have solar panels on my house. I do drive an electric car. I believe that renewables are the wave of the future in, in being efficient with our resources. My professional experience in healthcare has prepared me to manage complex information, communicate clearly with diverse stakeholders, make difficult decisions that affects people. My union leadership has taught me the value of collaboration, the importance of fair process, necessity, balancing competing interests. I fully understand the time commitment. Again, my children are grown. I have the flexibility. I'm prepared to dedicate my time to serve effectively. Whether appointed or elected in the future, my commitment is to serving Oshkosh in the long term. This is not about fulfilling a vacancy. I bring a nonpartisan approach, focused solely on what's best for Oshkosh. Thank you for your consideration. I hope to serve the residents of Oshkosh.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you.
I'm curious, what do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is? And the biggest challenge facing the residents of Oshkosh, if you think they're different?
Well, again, I, I think we're just a microcosm of what's going on nationally. Housing, the cause of housing, individuals who are not receiving a fair paycheck for their work, all puts barriers and puts stresses on lives. I think Alex had a great point. Our youth are disenfranchised to be involved now. I think it's great that he's on TikTok trying to get more people involved, because we have to get the youth more involved if we want to make change in the progress. We have to keep them included.
Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? Looks like that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, man.
Eric Gums, followed by Sean Rickert. Welcome, Mr. Gums. Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Right on. So first of all, I just kind of want to give a background about myself. Born and raised here in Oshkosh, went to St. Mary's for primary school, St. John Newman for middle school. Graduated Oshkosh North 2002, and then University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh with a degree in history. Originally wanted to be a teacher, believe it or not, and then I switched over to a history major. Because events, you know, my senior year of high school kind of took over 9/11, that sort of thing, and kind of changed my direction in life. And basically joined the Marine Corps. So I spent the, most of my adult life as a United States Marine officer, and I've led people from all over the United States, from all different backgrounds, all walks of life, different economic backgrounds and situations. And so I've been entrusted for, you know, most of my adult life with the youth of, of this country, which is probably our, our greatest national treasure, really. So that's kind of a little bit about myself. I, I actually also just recently took a job with Oshkosh North as a assistant wrestling coach for strength and conditioning. So I'm really enjoying that, continuing to work with some of the young kids here and, you know, get some time on the mats and get them in the gym and work them out and see how that season goes. Looking forward to that. Our, our first competition is starting next week. We have a dual meet coming up with Kimberly. So I have a little speech that I wrote. It's, it's more formal, but I have some, some very specific things that I'd really like to address and kind of really zone in on. That kind of goes after your question, but I'm, I'm very open to follow-on questions and looking forward to that when I'm done here as well. And I'll just kind of go from here. So yeah, my name is Eric Gums. I'm running for Oshkosh Common Council because I believe the city deserves leadership that listens, acts, and delivers results. We're proud of our community, but we have some serious challenges that are, need to be addressed. Across our neighborhoods, families and people that I've talked to recently and, you know, for a number of years are, are concerned about overall safety. Rising crime rates threaten not only our peace of mind, but also our ability to attract new businesses and residents. Plato once said, "The penalty for good men pay for indifference to public affairs is to be ruled by lesser men." And we can't afford indifference. We must invest in community policing, strengthening partnerships with law enforcement and residents, and ensure accountability so that every family feels secure on our streets. For the first time in recent memory, taxes have not been raised by the city, thanks to the new budget proposed by the city council. So kudos to you guys for putting something together that's really good, which kind of hits on, you know, the housing issue. So I mean, you know, taxes is kind of a big deal, and I understand that there's a large disparity between what the city draws for taxes and the school district draws for taxes. Maybe that's something that we can kind of cooperate with the school board as well and kind of work on them and, you know, see if we can get a partnership going there to work on common goals. However, taxes remain high for a city this size, and many residents feel that they're getting less in return for their investment in this community. The government must serve the collective good, not burden hard-working families. I'll fight for fiscal responsibility and transparency so that the taxpayers of Oshkosh know that their money is being spent wisely. Our city is also facing another serious challenge, declining population and shrinking public school enrollment. This issue is directly linked to the latter issue of public safety and urban decay. This issue, when families leave Oshkosh, classrooms empty, businesses struggle to find employees, and the entire community suffers. Currently, the Oshkosh area school district plans to lay off many school district employees due to loss of students and also dealing with a budget deficit. People are losing their jobs and our schools are losing staff because we have neglected our duty to the public to create and preserve an environment that fosters growth. We must begin to make Oshkosh a place where young families want to stay and grow. That means supporting strong public schools and businesses. When businesses and schools succeed, so too do our families, and most importantly, our children. Safety and security are the foundation of a society, and without it, we cannot build or grow this community. The reality is good people left because the city has changed for the worse. And those people took their jobs, their businesses, their children elsewhere, and we're now kind of seeing the second and third order effects and, of this failure and ripple, you know, it's rippling kind of through the community. If we don't take the crime and decay in our city seriously now, it will only continue to get worse. My vision is simple, a safer, stronger, more stable Oshkosh, safer streets, fair taxes, and schools that prepare our children for the future. But vision alone is not enough. We must act. And action requires leaders who are willing to listen, work hard, and put the people first. I want everyone in the city to know that I'm here for you and that I'll listen to your concerns and act in your best interests. If I'm, and if I'm wrong about something and you can show me, I'll be the first to admit it, and I'll change course. I think Marcus Aurelius said it best, "If someone can refute me or show me that I'm looking at things from the wrong perspective, I'll gladly change." It's the truth I'm after, and the truth never harmed anyone. The harm is to persist in one's own self-deceit and ignorance. I quoted Plato and Marcus Aurelius. It seems a little weird, but I quoted them tonight because they taught us that government isn't about power, it's about service, which I've already spent my entire adult life doing as a Marine officer. I hope to continue my service at the local level here in, in Oshkosh and support the community I grew up in and I love. I'm asking the council and the people of Oshkosh tonight for your trust, your support, and hopefully, again, in April, for the elections, your vote. And I'd like to work together to build an Oshkosh that's not only proud of its past but confident in its future. To the members of the common council and the people of Oshkosh, I ask you to support me for safer neighborhoods, fair taxes, and creating an environment conducive to growing businesses, families, and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody besides Councilman Nichols? Mr. Nichols, go ahead, and I'll follow.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your service to our country, too. I, I, I think I, I think I captured it, but just so that we put a finer point on it for everybody. What do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is? And what do you think the biggest challenge facing the residents of Oshkosh, if you think they're different?
Sure. I think they're kind of together, the same thing. So, you know, I just kind of reminisce a little bit about my time growing up here as a kid. You know, I used to be able to ride my bike and pretty much go anywhere and not have any issues. And, you know, recently, I would say probably in the last 10 years or so, we, we start seeing things pop up, especially from a crime perspective, that really have never been an issue here. We haven't had shootings or stabbings or, you know, open-air drug deals going on in the parks and stuff like that. I mean, these things never happened here before. And so when you look at kind of our population decline, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer why people are, you know, leaving the community and we have a shrinking population, which then also affects the schools, right? Because when, when families leave, they take their kids, well, then the schools suffer as well. And now we have teachers and, you know, whether they're part-time or full-time teachers or other employees that are working for the school district. I mean, their lives are impacted by that. So, I mean, that's, that's part of it. And I know, everybody kind of brings up the housing prices, which I agree, you know, prices right now are outrageous. I mean, I'm looking for a house myself right now. I've only been home for, you know, about three months or whatever. But that's kind of like a national level thing, but there are certain things that maybe we can talk to developers here within the city as, as, as a council. And I, I've seen kind of a growing trend in some areas and some larger cities and other parts of the country where, you know, the home sizes that were built 20, 30 years ago were built for larger families. And I mean, people are kind of having smaller families right now, and so do you really need that much space? So I mean, I know we have like the tiny house initiative that, you know, has seen some success, and I think there's some credence to that because obviously, you know, your house price is dictated kind of by square footage, because you're paying house, your, your house is kind of like, you know, it's $120 per square foot, you know, whatever that might be, which is kind of like the national average. So maybe we could talk to developers and just kind of design homes that are a better fit for actual people's needs nowadays, because I mean, the average family has like, what, 1.3 children or something like that now? So that's something we could look at. And obviously taxes, right? So taxes also dictates part of your mortgage. So if we can be smart and be fiscally responsible and, you know, make sure that we're spending money in the right places and focusing on the right things, and maybe trimming some of the fat where, where we can, you know, without affecting too much, I think that we can work on that, too, and that's, that's part of the affordability. And then the rest is really kind of just dictated by the real estate market. I think there's one other thing as far as rent is concerned. So, you know, somebody brought up rent. And I think that there's a few things that we can absolutely do as a council, and that is kind of addressing some of the codes. You know, for example, if you want to fix a bathtub and you take out a bathtub, you know, you have to get a permit and, you know, apply for all that kind of stuff. And I think maybe deregulating some of that for developers or for people who are into real estate and, and maybe reducing some of the, the actual overhead costs of replacing and maintaining properties would also help benefit not only the landlords, but also the people who are renting from them to maybe lower the costs across the board. So that's just another idea.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I don't have a question, just more of a, you kind of talked about if someone presents you with information, you might correct. Oshkosh has the largest population it's ever had right now. It's true, its student population is maybe declining. That's largely affected by birth rates, but I think you and I are probably similar in, in age. Maybe we're, we're 10 years apart, but also crime rates were probably the highest when I was a child or when you were a child in the 80s and 90s. So that was a, a peak of crime across the United States. Oshkosh saw the same thing. They saw a sharp decline in the 2000s. When we talk about crime being higher right now, we're talking about like a five-to-eight-year window. So our crime is not historically high, but it might have been higher than it was last year. It might have been higher than it was a couple of years ago. So I guess more, I would challenge you to maybe go and, and look at some of that stuff. I know people like to get in this ethos of Oshkosh is on a decline. It's not. We have more jobs, more people, more income than we've ever seen right now. So I would just like to share that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
A follow-up to Mr. Nichols' question, and I guess your response, and it was part of the questionnaire responses you gave us.
Sure.
So, and it actually kind of centers around your answer in terms of, you know, one of the biggest issues being crime in the city. Thoughts on the source of that, or thoughts on how do we address it? Do you have something more other than telling me I have a problem?
Yeah.
Is there, do you have a solution for it?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I'm being, I'm serious on that, like,
Right.
my day job, if people bring me a problem, I'd also like if they bring me a solution, too.
Yeah, right on.
Do you have one?
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's also like the, the type of crime, too, you know, like, I, I never heard gunshots ringing out on the street. So it's like, I, I sit in the backyard with my neighbors and stuff like that, and, you know, we hear pops going off and stuff like that. And the joke is kind of like, is that gunshots or is that fireworks? You know, that sort of thing. And so, you know, I, I read, you know, the news and stuff like that in the police department. They, they put out stories and whatnot. I mean, we just had a police officer that had his head bashed in not too long ago. You know, we have a stabbing in Menominee Park, which, never heard of anything like that before when I was a kid. We have shootings taking place and stuff like that. It's like, it's the violent crime, and, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that really turns people off, you know? And it, it's weird, right? You know, I've been preparing to move back. I mean, I, I've been to 26 different countries. I've lived all over the United States and, you know, talking to my friends and stuff like that. It's like, they said, a lot of them straight up said, hey, man, don't, don't go back there. You know, it's, it's changed. It's not the same city you grew up in. And I, I, I tend to agree with that, but I, I want to fight. I want to fight for Oshkosh, and I want to do the best I can to try and make this a place where people do want to come to. You know, and they do want to bring their families, and they do want to have their kids live here and grow up here and get educated here and go through the college and, you know, take this, I mean, it worked for me, right? So, you know, it's, it's a great, it's a great place, and I, I just think that we can do better. I kind of looked up like the per capita statistics on like how many police officers that we have versus residents, and I think the ratio is like 1.7. The national average is around 3.7. So there's a potential maybe for hiring more police officers and giving them a better presence. I mean, more officers means a quicker response time to calls and stuff like that. And obviously, if the police need help, you know, more officers on duty can, can respond quicker and then, you know, maybe doesn't put them in such a bad situation where they end up in compromising positions and they get hurt and stuff like that. So I'd, I'd like to take care of those guys, too, because they're doing the work that nobody really wants to do, and I don't think they get paid enough for it. So kudos to our officers in the room, and thank you for everything that you guys do, because you're the guys that are keeping us safe every single day. because you're the guys that are keeping us safe every single day, and, you know, my heart goes out to everything you guys do. So, thank you for that, too.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Gomes, and thank you for your service.
You betcha, thanks, guys.
Next up, Sean Rickert, and then we're going to be following that up with Andrew Davenport. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. I'm just gonna make a short speech, got all my information on the applications, a little background, I was born in Shawano County, little town called Bowler. About 300 people, so, and you knew everybody. Most of my life, I've just been a blue-collar worker, flip burgers, delivered pizzas, drove trucks, local and nationally. Doug Graves, hotel maintenance and engineering work, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, but most of it was helping people in one way, shape, or form. And that is why I'm running for the council seat, because I can still help people in a different form than I have in the past. It's what I like to do, I get gratification of solving problems for people and assisting in ways I can. But that's, I don't have a whole lot else to say, I mean, it's just, yeah.
That's okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Nichols, you go right ahead.
Thanks. Just like everybody else, what do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is, and what do you think the biggest challenge facing residents of Oshkosh if they're different?
I know the, one of the bigger factors is the housing. We do have all these developments going up, apartment complexes, as well as single-family homes and stuff like that, but the rents on some of these are particularly high, in my opinion. There's, I do not at this time have any ideas on how to regulate that, that would be something we would have to sit down and discuss. But that is more or less, the financial aspect is, everything is getting more expensive, so people are in a hard time with the rent, but also everything else. So, you gotta take your money and stretch it as far as you can, and the priorities tend to get the money versus the other stuff. And sometimes rent gets the money and your food doesn't, so it's...
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions? I don't see any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Andrew Davenport, and then we'll follow up with Jermaine Edmonds. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make this short and sweet as well. So, just quick crash course in my history. I attended UW Whitewater from 2004 until 2006, where I promptly dropped out to pursue my life as a rock star. So, as that did not turn out, I ended up becoming a mechanic in Madison, Wisconsin. I did that for Sherwin-Williams, working on specialty equipment, did that for seven years, grew that business quite well. I left that to increase, or grow my career, I became an assistant manager for Sherwin-Williams Paints while returning to school and finally earning that degree. I earned a degree in psychology, minor in philosophy. I then did that for about a year, took over the store as a store manager, where I was an award-winning store manager, winning not only awards from the company, Sherwin-Williams itself, but also the community as a whole, the business that I ran. Did that for about six years, left for my current career. I am now an account manager with a company named, called Reiko, and so, I get to travel all over the state, Northern Illinois, the UP, that's basically what I do, sales for work, so I'm driving all over the place, and that's what led me to Oshkosh. I actually got lost while trying to visit a customer here and ended up downtown. At the time, I was looking for a house to buy, and it was quite wonderful, because I ended up here, and I'm like, oh, I never thought about living in Oshkosh, this is pretty cool, so I came back, I visited. I then loved it, so then I brought my partner, Brittany, she came, visited, loved it. That was two and a half years ago, is when we bought our house here. So, we ended up loving it, haven't regretted a day. Unfortunately, as much as I wanted to volunteer and become part of the city, Brittany got seriously ill, but she's on the mend now, so I'm kind of one of the more later applicants to this process, because I finally was like, hey, well, what can I do amongst the city? So, that is what led me to stand here today. So, with my career now stable, I am looking to help the city, be it in this role or another one, you probably will not see this, probably not be the last time you see my face, but what I hope to bring is some outside perspective. As I said, I'm not from Oshkosh, I'm not born here, but the nice thing about that is I don't have any conflict of interests, I don't have anything going on here other than what I can see and what I can read in the history. So, looking over the previous strategic reports has been very eye-opening, and actually, I'm more impressed than ever with how the city's been progressing, because this, not only do I get to see and compare this to Milwaukee, Green Bay, Eau Claire, La Crosse, all these other good cities that I get to travel to and stay in, wine and dine, I can see that this city is progressing in a way, and I want to be a part of that. I hope to bring my background in sales, as well as the much-public-facing element that I had from working retail for almost 20 years. So, I'm used to dealing with people, be it the positive and the negative, which can definitely come with a job such as this. So, I hope that I can bring my ability to be prepared, to be very responsive and responsible, to help the city continue to grow and face challenges of the future.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks. What do you feel the biggest issue facing the city of Oshkosh is, and the biggest issue facing the residents of Oshkosh if they're different?
I'd say the city as a whole, my biggest fear, and I think a lot of other people might have ran into this in the past, is population growth. It has been growing, looking at the chart from the strategic plan, it's been fairly flat. In business, that's not enough of an increase, you know, we gotta get 10% over year, over year, but overall, that's a good trend. The problem is, is if you talk to some of these people from, I'm a member of the EAA, you know, you meet people at the EAA Air Venture, and they're like, wow, Oshkosh is a really cool town. Like, a lot of people only know that because of that, or Countryfest, or Crossroads, and I think bringing more people in is going to be a benefit for everyone, not only just the towns, we can bring in more revenue, excuse me, revenue and improve the schools, so on and so forth, but that allows us to have more business opportunities, as well as a bigger community to draw from as a whole. For the challenges of the residents themselves, everything's expensive, we've already hatched this over, and it's probably what everybody's gonna say, having just bought a house two years ago, I mean, that's wild, because I bought a house about six years ago, and that was way easier. So, everybody's kind of broke in any way that we can keep more money in the tax pay years pockets and keep everything running smoothly, especially services. For where I live right now, I can see them putting in all those new water mains and those pipes, that's awesome, seeing an actual city be upgraded instead of some cities I have lived, rolling backwards, that is pretty awesome. So, I'd say as long as we can keep people employed, happy, and keep doing what we're doing, that's gonna be the best.
Thanks. Mr. Beal?
So, you touched on this in your supplementary questions, and I appreciate that, excuse me, everybody did, because it was one of the questions we asked, but you said you travel quite a bit for work, and you said that you have the flexibility to be here when we need you and, you know, meet all the things. Do you foresee any possibilities in your future at work that your role could change or your role could advance and that may change things?
Not really. I have the weird thing of, I actually really love what I do, so I really like my job, and I have no plans on leaving it. I've always joked around with all of my customers, the only way I'm gonna leave this position is that I get fired or I die. So, it's nice because I get to control my own schedule, I write it completely myself, there's a couple of dates, you know, I, being a sales guy, have to go work trade shows and do the song and dance routines, but other than that, I plan on seeing, staying here and continuing to be part of this community for as long as I possibly can.
Mr. Phoam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew, appreciate you being here, thank you for applying, I'd like to thank all the candidates for applying, it's great to see that we have 14 of them. Question for you is, when it comes to customer service, it's something that the city has been consistently trying to improve on, it is baby steps, it is not going to be, you know, blanket changes overnight. In your opinion, as a member of council, what would you like to focus on in terms of improving customer service outcomes from the city's standpoint?
From the city's standpoint, I think the hardest thing is, and just to bring up some of the references that I reviewed previous to coming tonight, it's, you're not always going to be the most popular person, and not everybody's going to agree with your decisions. I know a lot of these times, mostly like with housing development, you know, putting up these big apartments, oh, you know, not in my backyard, I don't want this. So, I think the hardest thing is having to approach people, and anybody who's always, anybody who's worked in customer service always hears, the customer's always right. But that's not the full saying. It's actually not the customer's always right, but the customer is never wrong. So, you have to connect with them on their level. So, improving that would definitely be sitting down, if you have people that are not happy with what you're doing, figuring out why are they unhappy? Of course, they're gonna be like, well, this housing development sucks. Well, why does it suck? Well, you know, it's gonna bring in low-income people. Well, can you define that more? And break it down and figure out what the base of the problem is, because it's probably not just a building. Nobody's gonna be really that mad at a building unless the architecture's really bad. But being able to connect with somebody and actually figure out the baseline problem with it, and connecting on that level. Will you please everybody? No, but could you at least make them feel a little bit better about understanding the decision, why it's good for the city, maybe it's not good for the few people it affects, but we have to progress the city as a whole, I'm sorry this doesn't work for you, but this is going to be how it's going to be.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
We have Jermaine Edmonds, followed by Elijah Plonsky. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jermaine Edmonds. Just a little bit about me is, I graduated with my associate's degree from Fox Valley Tech here in town, currently going after my bachelor's in business, or business administration with an emphasis in general management at UW-Green Bay. I own two properties in town, one in the process of converting over to a high-performance for people with cognitive and physical disabilities. I've been in the healthcare field for now 10 years, serving people, and that's what I find that gives my drive to come to work or serve people every day. In that process of obtaining these degrees, I'm engaged in many skills and licensing, like being a Realtor. I also do some local DJing. I run into a lot of people that have a lot of things to say, and I love listening to them, and I believe it doesn't take just one, it takes many to build a strong foundation for a thriving community. I'm not gonna take up too much time, I'm just gonna talk about two things in particular, and that's just smart budgeting, infrastructure, and smart investments, as well as families. I do believe that, I'm not saying that there isn't smart budgeting or anything going on, but I do believe taking a more look at a lot of the construction that we're doing, so we're not going back and doing it again, and in, as well as investing into those community things that we're reconstructing. I believe that Oshkosh is growing, and another thing is with the events, I heard you guys talking about some event insurance, I have noticed that, you know, when COVID came, it put a pin in a lot of events that happened, and I know that kind of bummed a lot of people out, because I feel like a lot of people just like to get out, you know, in those events and things like that. And something like that is, I definitely want to see more of those events, as well as, I think with the more events, I think we need to find some more parking arrangements downtown and things like that. These people are coming, I don't think they're really getting views of the city, as well with the influx of apartment buildings and things like that downtown and around there, I do think that would be beneficial. And then, on the families, I do believe that talking to these families and wondering why they're not coming to the school district, as well as why they may be thinking of leaving the school district, would be very beneficial. And I just want to say, if I'm elected, I will make sure that every ear that wants to listen will hear, and every voice that speaks will be heard. If you elect me, I won't just listen, I'll speak with the voice of our community, and that's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nichols, if you want to go ahead.
Yep. It'd be really weird if I switched it up.
It would be.
So, I'm not going to.
Or if I called on somebody else first.
Yeah. What do you feel the greatest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is, and the greatest challenge facing its residents if they're different?
I think that there's a lot of ideas without much people speaking on them. For instance, I think, like a lot of people actually just said, with the zoning and the housing, like for instance, my property and my street, they're not allowed to build multifamily homes on there, or reconstruct your house into a multifamily home. I feel like maybe repurposing some of those zones would open up some cheap, affordable living, as well as I believe the property tax and the budget has been a deciding factor for a lot of people I know. Me with two homes and working from my investments and then seeing my investments take more money than I'm receiving, basically, from, kind of hurts you a little bit, and that's something that you want to make sure you're bringing everyone together and making sure that everyone knows that it's for the better of the community.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. Elijah Plonsky, and then followed by Meredith Sherman. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here tonight, I really appreciate your consideration for the at-large, open vacancy currently being occupied by Councilmember Chris Larson. My name is Elijah Plonsky. I'm a double major currently at the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh, and I've been in Oshkosh for five years. Pursuing an honors BA, and in addition to that, I have student experience at the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh that I believe pertinent to the city council. I know how to take meeting minutes, I understand rules of order. In addition to that, I served as the executive communications director for the Oshkosh Student Government for a period of a year, and in that time, I leveraged my skills as a journalist and as an English major to network with the community and to ultimately post and develop a social media presence across Instagram and Facebook. And in my time there as well, I also updated our website infrastructure using WordPress, and I was responsible for monitoring KPIs, because one of my minors is public relations. So, my initiative for trying to serve on the council is to be a bridge between the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh and the city at large. I believe that my leadership experience at the university positions me in a unique opportunity to be that bridge, not only because I've been a voice for the student body, but because I have a unique insight into the new strategic plan that is currently governing the direction and vision of the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh. I served on the Strategic Planning Committee for a year, and in that time, I helped devise goals and metrics and progress measures alongside faculty to ultimately help shape the direction of our university. And I was very proud to do that on behalf of the university under Chancellor Levitt. In addition to that, I was also appointed to the Reclex Task Force, which I served with Councilmember Spambauer in his capacity as Sustainability Director. And in that time, I was very proud to offer my experience as a communications director by ultimately supporting the direction of the committee and supporting the direction of the experts on the committee, such as Councilmember Spambauer, because ultimately, I'm here to learn, and that's really what I want you all to take away from this tonight. Not only do I have experience in communications, I have experience in committees. I understand the natural procedural flow of meetings, and I think with that experience in mind, I could be a good ambassador for the city of Oshkosh, a city I love, a city that I've come to ultimately call my home over the last five years.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nichols, go right ahead.
What do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Oshkosh is, and what do you think the biggest challenge facing its residents if they're different?
Well, I think that's a good question, because ultimately, I think if you look at it from a dual perspective, from residents and city, that's ultimately a false spectrum because you need to look at the city as being a conduit for the people. If you're not considering the problem as one, then I think you're kind of off-base, with all due respect. I think the issues of the city are the issues of the people, and the issues of the people are the issues of the city.
What do you think those issues are?
Well, I think those issues are definitely issues that we've addressed tonight, such as affordable housing, some... as affordable housing, some things that the city can't directly solve, right? But I think in my role as a communications, you know, professional, what I can do for the city is I can brand the city as an ear for the people's problems. The problems that the city not can't necessarily solve by itself, but can listen to and hear based on the feedback of the community.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Thank you, sir. No, you're okay. You're okay. Ms. Sherman and then followed by Dan Lenz. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi there. Meredith Shireman, not Sherman, Mr. Muggenauer. I'm thrilled to be up here tonight and ask for someone to take a leap of faith and nominate me for the vacancy left by Chris Larson. I know many of you up there. Some of you know me as a marathoner. I have run thousands of miles across the city streets of Oshkosh. Maybe you know me as a proud mom of three kids who went to Oshkosh schools and two of them are Titans. Maybe you know me as the spouse of a retired school teacher of 25 years, 20 years, or maybe we rubbed elbows in the business community as I've been an officer at a local bank for 25 years. Perhaps we served on the Y board together. Maybe we were in Southwest Rotary. Maybe you were part of Propel, a young professionals organization that I was the inaugural member of. The reason why I bring those things forward is not to boast, but it's really to tell you for 20 years, I have been committed to groups and organizations in this community. And further, 20 years ago, I also served on city council. So I've been in your seat. I've been through an election. I know what it's like. It's a tough job. 14 people coming forward tonight. You've got a tough job. Everybody brings a different perspective. Currently, I'm on the Plan Commission. I'm on the Art and I'm also on the Redevelopment Authority as members. So a lot of the things that come before the council, I've already, you know, I've already, it's already come through our through us. I hope that my experience will bode me well tonight and get someone to nominate me to sit up there with you. I do have three specific interests. Number one is transparent and honest communication. And for me, I think you guys do a great job. I'm not, I mean, Chris Larson probably does the best out of everybody. So if anybody follows him, we all know that. I'm not here to replace Chris Larson from a communications perspective. I actually think we do a good job. But what I do think is that residents, and so DJ, if you're listening, I'm gonna answer your question right off.
Got it.
Is is that they don't, they don't always have all the information and they don't have the knowledge, even though we speak it, we put it in the paper, we tell them, sometimes they don't have all the information that they need. So before us in the Plan Commission, I had so many, so many, like, a lot of people come to me and say, we don't need a hospital. Why are you built? Why did you okay a hospital to be built on the riverfront? We don't want that. We want a bar and a restaurant. We want, you know, entertainment, the boating community. We're boaters. I just kept having to tell them that that wasn't going to happen on that piece of property and why the hospital made sense. But they, you know, came guns ablaze and it was just because they didn't know. Friends, friends, family, they all said that to me. But once I explained to them the why, they understood more. Number two is fiscal responsibility. I'm a little surprised you didn't hear more about that tonight because that's a big job. That's a big part of the job up there. Being an officer of a bank, you have to have financial acumen. I wouldn't be where I am today if I didn't have financial acumen. The budget's a big deal. I think it's 240 million-ish. And then you have a CIP budget that gets distributed over five years. It's a big job to decide how to, you know, how to eventually approve that. City staff brings it forward. This council then ultimately approves it. DJ, to answer your second question, what I see under fiscal responsibility that's big for for all of you up there is competing priorities. So it's how do you decide to cut the Humane Society and then spend $2 million on potentially on a pedestrian bridge? Like, how do you make those decisions? That's a tough job up there. It gives, there's a lot of unpredictability, too. You don't exactly know. I can't tell you what's gonna come up in 2026 because I haven't been privy to all of it, but I can tell you there's gonna be big issues. So those competing priorities are something that always is something that on council you have to juggle. And then finally, economic development, which is one of my, you know, favorites, obviously being on Plan Commission and the RDA. So around economic development, there's two special things that are important to me. So one is downtown development. So between Discover Oshkosh, the Chamber, the city, you know, there's been multiple surveys that were done on what is important to make a thriving community. And they all say having having a core central city. So I know that there are plans to do things in Opera Square that are really exciting. I know something's going, there's discussions going on with City Center. Don't know what those are, but that potentially has some some great excitement around it, too. Having residences downtown, having full storefronts, those are all things that make a a city vibrant and thriving. And then the other piece is housing. What I think differentiates me between others from from a housing perspective is I think I look at housing as the whole, I look at low income, I look at workforce, and I look at luxury as well. I'm excited about Farmington. I'm excited about Washington School. Before us at the RDA this last week, a developer came forward and talked to us about a infillot, a concept that he has that's new and kind of exciting. I don't think we've ever considered anything like that before. So we're anxious to talk more to him. But then also, I like the, I think you can't ignore the luxury side. And that is when we bring people to Oshkosh, you know, in leadership type positions or any really any kind of positions, but they live here or they work here, but they live somewhere else because they can't find the housing. I just think we have to be mindful of it, all, you know, all spectrums. So I'm gonna end the way I started and say thank you, you know, thank you for the consideration to sit up there with you. I hope that my experience bodes me well tonight. And I'm ready to, as I look at that agenda, I mean, there's 11 special events that are coming before you tonight. There's the the pedestrian bridge conversation. Then there's a closed session on City on City Center. It potentially could be a long night for you tonight, but I'm positioned to, you know, start immediately in making an impact. Thank you. Any questions?
You answered mine. You answered mine. We're good.
I got you.
We called him out. We're good.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions from counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Lenz followed by Tim Newbauer. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Dan Lenz, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Oshkosh, a retired business owner, a veteran who served over 20, 21 years, had the honor to lead soldiers on peacetime and in combat. Somebody who's deeply committed to strengthening our community. I'm here tonight because I believe the citizens deserve a responsive, transparent and accountable government, one that listens, communicates clearly and respects the people it served. My focus is simple. I want to be a conduit between the city, residents and the council. To help make informed decisions, I would take public input and to ensure the city's staff and departments operate efficiently responsibly, I'm committed to advocating for fewer and more practical ordinances for the government structure that works with the people and not around them. To answer your question, DJ, we've already established that housing is a significant concern. My thinking is maybe we can streamline the process to build to make building in Oshkosh more affordable and less cumbersome. So the council can't change what people are gonna charge for homes. They can't change what people are gonna charge for rent. Silly to them, think that way. So we, what we can do is we can reduce our our onerous burden on them with ordinances and codes. And we need to really do a significant review of that. The residents, while I don't disagree that housing is a problem for them, most of the residents I speak to feel they have no voice in their community. They're confused by the two, the split government system, if you will, right? Who do I talk to to get this problem resolved? I talked to somebody there, but I can't get that problem resolved. We, we need to make it clear to them who represents the citizens. So.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for Mr. Lenz? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. Mr. Newbauer followed by Brittany Gasper. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry, I had a really bad argument with my printer. So I have notes on my phone, so bear with me. As some of you, maybe all of you know me, I'm Tim Newbauer. I'm 44, lived here my whole life. I am a currently I'm a Realtor with Century 21. I'm a small business owner. We own Studio 708 here in Oshkosh. We are also investors in property. We have rental units and a couple of commercial units that we have here in Oshkosh. Sorry. As a lot of people who do know me in the city, it's basically the Corbett House. We kind of turned a project of ours, one way that we can afford a house for our very large family, we have seven children between the two of us, was to basically build something for ourselves. Me as a kid, I used to bike to the YMCA every day during summer. There was this house in the corner of Court and Washington that I always loved. And I loved the sixplex next door. I don't know why, but I just loved it. So I always remember that as a kid. When I became a Realtor, that was the first house I went and looked through. With the city, I see a lot of things around here that just keep getting torn down instead of preserved. So my contribution to the city and to my family was to take on this project. We were hit with tons of different roadblocks, whether it was Planning Commission, Inspection Department. With that being said, we need to find a way to make it simpler. We need to simple simplify things, whether it's over permitting, who can do the work. A big argument with me owning properties is I can't do any of the work because I'm not a licensed contractor. I can also argue the fact that that little piece of paper doesn't make me any more or less qualified to do the work. I think we need to make it easier for people like myself who want to do the Corbett House, who couldn't get permits at first because I didn't live on the property. Like I said, me living there doesn't make me any more or less qualified to do the work. So we need a way to make it simple for people like myself that want to build something for themselves. Or as a property owner, to be able to work on, let's say I want to go and I have to change out a ceiling fan in a rental unit. I cannot do that because I'm not a licensed professional. Now, I don't know how handy everybody is, but putting in a light and a ceiling, pretty simple. Three wires, bolt it up, good to go. I shouldn't have to hire somebody, spend $300 to $500 to do that, which comes to the cost of housing. You know, your rents, our taxes have all gone up. I mean, you can look from 2020 to now, like, a lot of taxes have doubled. So typically, if you own properties, that's gonna get passed on to the tenants, which is where we have problems with affordable housing and cheaper rents. You know, it's still an investment property. It's still a business for people. Investors are not gonna take on that full burden. And it's the same thing, too, with just residential owners and their taxes have gone up. As a Realtor, I look at all these things and I look at taxes. And people I show houses to, same thing. I own a house in Black Wolf. And I told them, hey, the property taxes are 3,500. But if you were in Oshkosh, they'd probably be about 6,500. So my sell to them on that house was, okay, that's $300 less a month you have to pay in taxes. So now you can afford a little bit more at home compared to if you're looking in the city. And it's the issue that we have. We need it to be more affordable for everybody. Everybody's taken a hit with just the way the world has gone since COVID. And I think we just need to dumb things down a little bit and simplify it and make it easier for people. Same thing with landlords and permit stuff. Permits are great. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with getting inspected. But I think we need to allow some people who are handy like myself to be able to work on these properties, improve them, so that way we can keep our rents lower for our tenants. So I think there's a lot of opportunities we have that we can look at to help beautify the city. When it comes to rental units, there's a lot of really crummy ones. And they don't get updated. Well, if you get updated, their taxes go up. Then that means we need to increase people's rents. That's a big issue with a lot of the housing around here. To answer your question, the issue is here in the city. One of them is homelessness. It's a big one. Me living and doing that house, it was abandoned for 10 years. And the residence next door is abandoned. So homeless people, drugs being done. I've had plenty of break-ins, trespassing, and on my own property before I'd lived in there. So I know the crime that comes with homelessness. There needs to be, I don't, and I don't have the solution for it. But we need to figure out a way and why people are being sent here. Me living on Washington, I can tell you, there's a blue car that drops off multiple people per year. And these people empty out all their stuff on the sidewalk right by the rope harness. Basically, we're just, our increase in homelessness is just becoming way too much. When I was a kid, we had five homeless people. We all knew their name. We all knew they were harmless. That's not today. They're just, we need to figure out something with that. We need to figure out, obviously, everybody's touched on affordability of houses. Well, that's where some of my ideas came in of making it simpler. So us as landlords or property owners don't have to pass that on to other people. Very simple. Like I said, to me, over permitting, we should really look at costs of getting those permits. And I think residents who pay taxes should have a little bit more freedom and say in what they do with their property. I feel like, you know, the C Click Fix thing, which I think was great in essence, and I know it's gotten fixed. Now you have to put a name in there. But I think it's an issue where, sorry, I don't know where I lost my train of thought on that. Forget all that. Sorry, a little nervous up here, you know, so. But no, I think me as a person, I'm just a simple person. I am self-made. I was super young, 19, started working in prison, did that for 10 years, worked at the DMV for two, decided none of that was for me. I took on my passion of photography and built that into a very great business that my wife still currently runs. And then during COVID, we got shut down. So we bought properties and like, I would like to become a Realtor. And five years fast forward, I actually loved that job. So I still stick with it. But with all that, I have a really good background when it comes to house costs, why they go up, why they go down, taxes. And I would just like to give you guys more of a simple, you know, shoot from the hip like opinion. I know you guys are gonna be way more better at all of it. I'm not coming in here as an expert in anything, but I feel like me just simple, I can give you a simpler answer, simpler solution and not try to overcomplicate everything, which I feel like this world's gotten so complicated. Let's just try to dumb it down a little bit. Since I didn't look at anything, I want to make sure I did hit all of it. In closing, basically, there's a big seat to fill. Chris Larson did an amazing job. He is so good with words. I am terrible with words. But I would, I absolutely do my best to be forthcoming and try to work only for the people of Oshkosh. I want what's best for them, which also best for me, best for everybody in this room. And I just want a better city. Not that we don't have one, but we can always improve. Okay? Any other questions?
Okay.
I don't have a question, but I want to say thank you for, in a nutshell, providing potential solutions to problems that you think we have. And we've also, I think, addressed over our time on council from different, you know, within the community development and the permitting areas. I like solutions. I like options. Thank you for bringing those to the table.
I have a lot more, but only have five minutes, so.
And I'm also sure every candidate does. I just, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for your consideration.
Brittany Gasper will be next. Is Brittany here? I don't see Ms. Gasper. We'll move on to them. The final applicant would be Logan Youngbacher. Good evening. Welcome. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and share the perspective I hope to bring to the Oshkosh Common Council. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Logan Youngbacher. I am a local business owner and executive with Alexander Bishop based here in Oshkosh. I was born across the street from Monomity Park, and no matter where life, my studies, or work has taken me, Oshkosh has always been and will always be home. Throughout my career, I've managed complex operations, built strong and collaborative teams, and overseen real estate development and capital market finance projects across the state of Wisconsin. My work has taught me how to meet challenges with clarity, think strategically, and help and keep our long-term goals firmly in focus. Beyond my professional work, I've remained deeply committed to both civic and community service. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for Downtown Oshkosh Incorporated, and through that experience, I've had the privilege of speaking with residents, supporting local business, and seeing firsthand how city decisions affect daily life. Contributing to a progressive, inclusive, and forward-looking community is important to me. And my commitment to Oshkosh runs deeper than any single appointment or term. I care about where the city is heading, and I am dedicated to staying engaged and involved. My experiences, both civic and professional, have ingrained upon me the importance of leading with respect, integrity, and accountability. And these experiences guide my approach to council service. Council service demands thoughtful and deliberate judgment. Decisions grounded not in what is easy or convenient, but in what truly serves the best interests of our community. It demands transparency so that residents feel informed, included, and confident about the direction we are heading and in the decisions we make along the way. This job demands honesty, because people deserve leaders they can trust. Council service also requires the responsible stewardship of both our natural and financial resources, ensuring that the choices we make today serve to build a stronger Oshkosh for tomorrow, an Oshkosh that remains resilient, vibrant, and full of opportunity for all. This requires staying connected on a daily basis with the people who live and work here. When residents bring concerns forward, I believe that first and foremost, we must listen. From there, it's essential to be upfront about what the city can and cannot do, and when an issue falls outside of the city's authority, we must serve to help find the right channels and support better suited to address those concerns. Even when the city is not the one who can act directly on an issue, people still deserve clarity, respect, and guidance. Looking ahead, I see an Oshkosh rich with opportunity, one with strong, welcoming neighborhoods, thriving business districts, reliable infrastructure, and public spaces we are proud to share with our friends and families. I believe this opportunity grows best through collaboration. Residents working alongside local businesses, community partners, and city leaders to build a shared vision of our future. Progress towards a common goal requires teamwork. It requires open communication, and it requires a mindset that looks not only at where we stand today, but at what we can accomplish together. Supporting Oshkosh's strategic plan means staying focused on practical solutions, measurable initiatives that serve to improve our quality of life, support our local businesses, strengthen our neighborhoods, and keep our community safe and healthy. Thank you again for the chance to share my background and perspective. These are the values I bring to everything I do. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to contributing to our city's continued success. And if I can kind of preempt some of this discussion here.
Go right ahead.
I hear the problems, and I, I'm going to echo everything that's been said here about affordability and housing. I think a problem with a resident is a problem for the city, and it's an order of magnitude. And it's important to hear those and work with those. And like, as I said before, there's only so many levers the city can pull. I think one thing we can do is work with our local partners from an educational standpoint, which we have many assets in the community, to help people in various stages of life, you know, maintain the skills and give them the opportunities to grow whatever economic situation they're in. And as well for housing, to, we need to broadcast the opportunities and assets that we have as a community so that people want to come and join us here. Those are the two main things that I think that I'm focused on. It's also bridging the gap between the haves and the have-nots in our communities. We need to lower the ladder and allow people to, to join us. And that means listening to everyone, so...
Counsel, any further questions? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so we've had all applicants that were present have given their presentation to us. I'll now open the floor for public comment. I do have one person who's registered, Dr. Coleman. If you'd like to come on up. If we could, good reminder, keep it to five minutes, and the topic at hand is the empty council seat, so, and welcome.
Thank you so much, and good evening to the council, to our city clerk, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And to our city manager and deputy city manager. I love this city. I moved here about two and a half years ago as well, and immediately fell in love with how embraced I was by this community, by my ability to serve the future of the city, and that is our city's young people. I just want to speak briefly in support of a particular candidate, Mr. Amos. I have found him to be a thoughtful listener, a partner in the efforts to build on the progress that this council, our faith community, businesses, organizations, neighborhood associations have all committed to. And that is threading the needle between preserving the traditions and the strengths that members of this community have loved and appreciated for so many decades, but not foregoing or that love being eclipsed by the future of the city. I don't believe that our best days are behind us. I believe that we have a very rich and purposeful past that we can build on to embrace the future of this city. And so I just want to provide my comments in support of the candidate that I believe will further that, and that is Mr. Jacob Amos. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the number of the public who'd like to speak to us tonight before we bring it up here for our discussion and our action? I don't see anybody. Being there is no other public comment, I'll take a motion and a second to bring a resolution, 25583, onto the floor.
So moved.
Second.
And this will be time for council discussion at this point. Counsel, if you have further questions of specific applicants, now would be a great time to ask those. Also be timed, if you want to make any generic statements, that would be a good time now. Once we move into the nomination process and have nominations and voting on the floor, we wouldn't bring, we wouldn't bring candidates or applicants back up during that process. So we would want to ask those before we get into the nomination process. Otherwise, we would do that, if we didn't reach a consensus and we opened to back up, we could then open up public, our interaction period at that time. Mr. Nichols, filed by Mr. Bulow.
Thank you, I just have a general comment, I'm not asking anyone else any questions, I've done that already. But I do want to mention that my question was an important one because there wasn't a right answer. The 14 people that answered questions, 13 people that answered questions tonight and spoke to us, they're probably the most engaged, or I hope they are relatively the most engaged, of the citizens in Oshkosh. And some of the problems facing our city and our residents were housing opportunities for young people, homelessness, feeling disenfranchised, public safety, affordability of life, population growth, building codes, communication, complicated bureaucracy, over permitting taxes, and there were others that I didn't capture. So what this group does, and I'm not saying because I'm part of it, what any city council does is really hard, because there are so many competing interests and so many personal opinions about what the biggest problem is. So the person that's sitting up here doesn't need to agree with me on what I think the biggest problems are. Hopefully, they have a different perspective, because they're going to be able to champion those things. But what a city does every day is really hard. So I really just want to say I appreciate everybody that came up and spoke today, everybody that applied, the other members of council sitting up here today, because it's a hard job. And you have to say no to people sometimes, and just say yes to people sometimes, and sometimes people are mad that you've said yes to them. That's a crazy situation. But anyway, I appreciate everyone doing this. I want you to know that whoever is selected, you have big shoes to fill, and Councilmember Larson. If you're not selected, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't run in April. I really appreciate you spending time to come and talk to us tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bulow, filed by Deputy Mayor Stevenson.
Thank you. You said this is the place that we can give general comments, and I'll say, I wrote it down here, is the council should be in good, good shape for the future. With this many people coming forward and being deeply invested in running and serving, it gives me a lot of hope that we're never going to run out of great candidates to want to serve up here. And like DJ said, it is not a glamorous position. No matter what we vote, we generally have 50% of the people ready to throw stuff at us. So the fact that 14 of you were willing to come here tonight to put your hat in the ring for this, I applaud all of you, and I really thank you. I think DJ also said a really important thing, that we only get to select one. So if you're not the one selected tonight, please do not let that be discouraging. Please continue in your public service and boards and commissions and all the things that you do, because I know for me, I have three or four people that I could gladly vote for to be up here, but we only have one spot. So I will wait until later when we open for nominations, but I just wanted to say thank you to all, and please don't let this be the end if it's not your night.
Deputy Mayor, then filed by Councilmember Flohm.
I'll say similar things. I enjoyed everybody up here, not that I enjoy this process, but I enjoyed all of you kind of expressing your passion for Oshkosh, your interest in Oshkosh. Also, it was a really good change of pace for having a lot of positivity. You know, a lot of times, people come to this mic because they're a little upset with things, but I suppose you need our vote. But again, I think all of you did a really good job. I'm going to echo some of the things that these guys said. If you don't get picked tonight, does not mean that you were a bad candidate. Does not mean that this council doesn't like you or something of that nature. I think everybody up here has different, everybody in this audience has different strengths. Like Carl, I think a handful of them, in my mind, rose to the top. But in the future, if you guys, if anybody ends up running, please reach out. I'll give pointers to whoever, I don't care where you land on either issue, on what party you're with, or what side of the aisle you land on. I will note that I made a handful of notes in here to bring back to staff on things I don't talk about. Tim, I do hate that I have to get permits for, for non-occupied houses. And I also didn't realize that events were such a big, maybe that's a blind spot that I, events came up a lot, and maybe we should try to do a little bit better job with that. Anyway, I'm rambling a little bit, I just wanted to say thank you. This is going to be a tough process, but I think I'm ready for it.
Councilmember Flohm.
This job is, it's really about servant leadership. It will occupy a lot of your time, it will not be glamorous. I have found, in my short tenure on council so far, that I have been looking at flood damage in people's basements, I've been out in yards, I've been doing a ton of coffee shop meetings. There's a lot of listening that you need to do in this job. And sometimes, listening is better than talking in many circumstances. So I'm going to keep this very brief. Again, a number of fantastic candidates, if you don't get this position, don't let it deter you from future public service. We need people, we need people who care, and we need people who want to leave this community in a better place than how you found it. And I believe that everyone who applied has that, has that mindset going forward. So appreciate the time, appreciate learning about all of you, appreciate the people who reached out to me. And this will not be an easy process, but one that I'm looking forward to, thank you.
Very well put. Councilmember Flohm. Mr. Spanmark, go right ahead, you don't even have to press it.
Press, press the button. I will echo what, what all of my fellow council members said. I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking tonight. It's very clear that each of you gave a very thoughtful response and that, you know, all of you are engaged in the community in a lot of different ways and just are very engaged with the issues at hand that, that we're facing. And that Councilmember Nichols, right, kind of got us to pull out is that there's a lot that we're trying to address. And so, you know, that's, as others have said, there's, there's big shoes to fill. I would, I would also echo what the others have said. Don't let this deter you if you don't get selected tonight. There are very clearly, everybody here is engaged, and I know a lot of folks have already expressed interest in running for the, for the election in spring. So I think we've got a really great set of, of opportunities for the, for the next council.
Guess it's my turn. First, a thank you to the applicants. Having 14 interested people who want to put service to their community above themselves is an awesome thing. So a big, a lot of appreciation for that, and for putting yourself out there. This, this is the easier of the two processes, running for...
I disagree.
I think, and I hope to see as many names as has indicated that they are going to be running in this spring's election. Putting yourself out there, whether here, this process being open and, you know, information right at the fingertips for anybody to read, it's not easy, I want to acknowledge that. Stepping up to this microphone also, I should have maybe done it ahead of time to reduce it for you a little bit, but stepping up to that microphone in this room is not easy. Whether you're here for a positive thing that most of you, you know, all of you were here for tonight, or coming to us to tell us that something is wrong and something you care about, you want to see fixed, it is not an easy thing to do. So a lot of respect for you stepping out of your comfort zones, putting your name up for consideration, and a big thank you for that. I want to thank city staff, Clerk's Department for helping through this process, the City Manager's Office for helping through this process. Couldn't have done it without your professionalism and expertise, and so thank you for helping us run this in a, in a professional manner. For those who didn't know ahead of time, I know Councilmember Bulow alluded to it earlier. This appointment process, council decided to ask some more questions in advance. We hadn't done that in the past, I've been through two of these. I think two of the council members have been through one of these processes. And it was nice to be able to ask folks some good questions in advance and allow them some time to thoughtfully respond. And so maybe we, I should just at least let the public know, while the questions and the answers are out there for anybody to view and, and look at. One, what was your, what do you view your role as a city council member? Will you be running for the seat, for a seat on the common council regardless of an appointment tonight or not? Do you understand the time commitment that is required for a council member, and do you have that flexibility to accommodate those requirements? Where do you see this community in five years? A group of residents demands action on something that we legally cannot do or have zero control over, no control? How do you respond publicly and privately? What's your definition of sustainability, and how do you relate it to city operations? What's your opinion of city budget and taxes? Do you have any ideas to share? And as a council member, how would you support the strategic plan, goals, mission, and vision of this community? Those aren't easy questions. So again, thank you for providing those answers in advance. Allows us to have a little bit more insight coming into tonight, into you as candidates and how you view this community right now, and also how you think we can move forward and become a better place to, to live, work, and play. Regardless of appointment tonight, serving on a border commission is a great way to end up up here. I don't know a single one of us who probably hasn't served on a border commission prior to getting up here. It is a way to have a really good understanding of how government actually works, especially at the local level, and how you can have a really big impact on that process. We look to their boards and commissions to guide us on a multitude of things, and we do take their opinions and their suggestions seriously, and that is a great way to serve your community. I think that was, that was it for me. Councilmembers, any further comments or questions that you have before we consider this part closed, and I'll open it up for nominations? I don't see any. So at this point, I'll open it up for nominations, I'll call it three times, I don't... And all you have to do is put forward a name, there is no second required. A council member can put forth as many or as few names as they would like, and at which point, those will be the only names that will be up for the first round of voting. Mr. Bulow, and nominations are open, go ahead.
I'm going to nominate Jacob Amos.
Councilmember Nichols?
I'm going to nominate Logan Youngbacher.
Councilmember Flohm?
I'll be nominating Tim Newbauer.
Deputy Mayor?
I will nominate Mayor of the Shiremen.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third and final time. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. We have four candidates, Amos, Youngbacher, Newbauer, and Shiremen. That'll be in front of us. Process will be the city clerk will call your name as a council member, and then you need to tell them, tell her which one you are voting for. If we do not have four votes for one candidate on the first round, what will happen is we will go to a second round of voting. The, only the top two candidates would move on to that next, that next round. After that, we'll see how it goes. City clerk, if you'll take the first round of voting.
Nichols.
Youngbacher.
Spanbauer.
Amos.
Flohm.
Newbauer.
Bulow.
Amos.
Stevenson.
Shiremen.
And Mugrower.
Shiremen.
How do I say this?
Oh, well, we have Amos.
I have a second here.
Yeah, Shiremen with two, Youngbacher with one, Newbauer with one.
Okay.
At this point, the two with the lowest votes would drop off, Youngbacher and Newbauer, and the next round of voting would commence only with Amos and Shiremen as the two potential candidates. If we do not have four after this, I will call for one more round of voting with the same names. If we still do not have consensus at that point, I would consider this round closed and we will reopen the nomination process, just to give you clear understanding of what will happen over the next two votes. Amos and Shiremen are on the floor. If you'll call for the roll.
Nichols.
Amos.
Spanbauer.
Amos.
Flohm.
Shiremen.
Bulow.
Amos.
Stevenson.
Amos.
And Mugrower.
Shiremen.
Four, two. Amos.
We have an applicant selected. With that, we'll consider this process closed. Mr. Amos has been elected by this council as the next council member. Congratulations. What we're going to do is, we're going to swear in the next council member here before we move on to any action this evening. He's going to take that oath. We'll give the room a chance to clear out first, if you'd like to, and then, so why don't we take a little break right now, allow the room to clear if they'd like, and then we'll do Mr. Amos's swearing in right when we come back. Thank you again for being here tonight and participating in this process.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast.
...the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and the ordinances of the City of Oshkosh, and will faithfully discharge the duties of Oshkosh common council member to the best of your ability. Congratulations. Okay? Your seat? Yes.
Right up here. You're right.
Look, we're the servant. This is the best seat, just so you know.
Is it?
The whole, yeah. Next to anybody else.
Yeah. If you're into real estate, that's the best seat.
We are back. We are back live, and we're going to start the meeting at 8:01. Here we go. Public statements to council. I do not have anyone registered to speak under public statements. I do have somebody later in the evening on one resolution. I also do not have anybody on consent agenda, so I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the consent-related items? I don't see any. City clerk, if you can take the roll on the consent agenda.
Nichols.
Aye.
Amos.
Present.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Bulow.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
New Ordnance 25616 amend various provisions of Chapter 20 and 21 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to mandatory connections to the municipal water and sewer systems, and to payment of special assessments and connection charges to permit delayed connection and deferral of special assessments and connection charges for properties not currently connected to the municipal systems, and to establish a 20-year installment plan for payment.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a member of the public who'd like to speak to us, Mr. Klinger. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Appreciate you, your willingness to stick around and.
No, it's good.
Be here for that process and still share.
You get to learn a lot while you're sitting here and understand what the city's up to, so it's, it's good for me to be here. So, yeah, I don't think my stance is going to change on what you guys are doing with the deferment policy. I think it's great that you guys are doing something. I know, you know, this might get all scattered, except I'm going to try and fill in for my wife here and some of her concerns, but she'd love to talk, but physically gets sick any time she thinks about what's happening with our assessments and all that, so.
One of the things I want to do is go over some of the points that were discussed last meeting with regards to the people being surprised about these special assessments. We are. Mr. Bellcarelli, you know, he stated that there is a boundary agreement put in place that was done in 2004. When we purchased our house, it was about the same time. We were aware of that boundary agreement, but at the time, we were told that, you know, the amount of our assessments, whatever it's going to be, it was going to be basically a hookup charge. And we asked, well, I'd say, yeah, typically it's around $10,000. You know, whether we take that, you know, as with the grain of salt or whatever was totally wrong, sled, I don't know. However, you know, the hookup fee was typically $10,000, and, you know, we would pay for our laterals, and that is what the cost were going to be. One of the concerns I had was, when we were told that, we decided we weren't going to put in a mound system. I mean, that's the only reason we have a holding tank in our front yard. We don't have a mound system because we figured over the 20 years, by the time we get annexed, you know, it was a kind of a wash, $10,000 for a mound system versus, you know, $90 a pop paying for somebody to bump a tank out. We didn't do that. So, when it came up to the special assessment we get, it was a big surprise for us. It's going to be a big surprise to all these people that were from the town of Algoa that I'm sure when they purchased their house, or it was, you know, before this agreement was made, or they're not aware what the special assessment policy is. It's going to be a big surprise. And we see that there's some special assessments that are going to be coming now for the Ninth or the rest of Clairville Road and the rest of Ninth. And I am going to follow those very closely. I am very interested to see what your engineers come with, up with for the cost, what's going to be charged these places. I'd expect them to be in line with what would happen on Clairville. If not, there's, there's an issue. One of the things Mr. Bellcarelli mentioned again was that if we change now, you know, it's the people that were assessed before are going to be mad, or the people that were assessed before that are going to be mad. It's, it's time to pull off the Band-Aid, guys. It's probably the same thing that happened with the wheel tax. People were upset that they're going to get taxed for their cars and nothing's going to happen on their road. But eventually, I'm sure a lot of those people are smiling now, you know, considering that, you know, some of these places that were probably going to be assessed tens of thousands of dollars are now $3,750 bucks. So, eventually, I guess you gotta, you gotta pull off that Band-Aid and, you know, go through, make a change. You know, several of you said last time that this has been a problem for a long time, and I agree. It has been a problem for a long time, but not to this magnitude. You bring up Ninth Avenue, and I'm sure that was probably a lot of the impetus for, the wheel tax is the magnitude of their assessments, which were around $30,000. I don't know, I'm sure all of you have been through Ninth Avenue and seen the work they did there. That's a beautiful street. That's concrete, that's curb, that's gutter, sewer water. They did a lot there. So, you know, $30,000 is still a lot of money. $3,000 is a lot of money. It shouldn't be, you know, based off of magnitude. I think there's better solutions here, and we, I hope that you guys continue to investigate these solutions. And, you know, one of the things I wanted, my wife found was there's system expansion provisions. If you're expanding infrastructure to, you know, help the industrial park, there are provisions, there's way to fund that. There's, we're basically supporting the infrastructure that's going to feed the industrial park. That's why the water's running through there. That's part of the closed-loop systems. That's, that's, you know, something that we're paying for. These folks that are going to be assessed here on Clairville Road, that's a lot of develop, developable, I will call it developable, land that's able to be developed, that once you put that infrastructure in there, you're going to have people coming in, and you're going to be able to tax them, you're going to bring in more money. But the people that are getting charged for that initial work are the people that live there now. It's just not fair. One of the things that I read about is when you guys present these special assessments, you're usually, you're using your police powers. And there's a difference between using police power and just doing a normal assessment. And I've understood that this seems like it's an abuse of that police power. There, there's nothing that having a pipe down the road, and I think you guys agree on this, because you're deferring hookups, that's going to affect the safety of the public. We've got inspected wells, we've got inspected septics, and we have sewers that are safe. So, it just seems like this whole police power, you know, to get around, you know, being sued, I suppose, but it seems like it's kind of an abuse of power. One of the other things that my wife had mentioned is using tax incremental districts. You know, it's probably over my head how that works, but it seems like the businesses that are coming out to the industrial park for all this infrastructure is being put in, it seems like there's another way to do this. The other things we've looked at do is unit cost per household. You know, if it's a batter of the house that's worth $80,000, versus the house that's worth $250,000, you know, my, my usage is going to be the same as your usage. I guess all I can ask is, you know, continue looking into solutions. I'm sure you're going to hear a lot more when these assessments are put together and they're sent out to these households. And I'd say thank you for, you know, presenting a solution or presenting a Band-Aid, you know, for putting these, these assessments on hold for 10 years. You know, it's, it's still not helping us in the long run. We're still paying for that. We're still waking up every day, figuring out, trying to figure out where are we going to come up with this money in the long run? So, I hope you guys continue to look into, you know, solutions and making this better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. I need to take a step back before we advance on this and consult with the deputy city attorney. I think I did something wrong before. We didn't actually vote to put Mr. Amos onto council.
Oh, yeah, we need to amend the resolution.
I needed to amend the resolution and call for the final roll on that resolution.
Yes.
Yes. So, to do this cleanly, can you confirm, maybe we should pull back the motion and second on this one, get this off the floor? And then, do I need to reconsider consent? Even, Mr. Amos voted present, he still voted, and he wasn't seated properly to even vote on it. Should I reconsider all of consent to do this properly? Or do you have a different solution for me to the problem I created?
You voted present, is that what?
He did.
I did. Yes.
I don't think you have to revote on the consent agenda because he didn't participate.
Okay.
And if he wanted to... Well, I don't think you actually did it, you didn't necessarily do it the best way, but I don't think you did it the wrong way, because there was a motion on the floor to appoint a new council member. And then there was also the nomination of Mr. Amos, and then a vote was taken to put him on. So I don't think you, I don't think it was done incorrectly.
You're okay with the way I did it?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying he was right?
It's okay to say I'm right, that's, I wouldn't go that far.
Don't do that.
I see heads nodding that I shouldn't do that, so they didn't vote on it, but, but again, there was a motion on the floor to fill the vacancy. There was an nomination of Mr. Amos, and then there was a vote on him, so.
We can say it was done correctly, but you're still wrong.
If you're uncomfortable, you could simply do it again.
I would like to do it again. I want to make sure that there's no question moving forward from this time, at least that it was done.
You're always welcome to do it over again, and just so you're comfortable with it.
Who put forth the motion and second on 2551, excuse me, 25616?
The motion was Builo, the second was Spanbauer.
I will rescind if I'll Flom will.
Spanbar.
Oh, Spanbar. Yes.
Both of them are pulling their motion and second for 25616 to take that off the floor. Let's, we had a motion and a second to put 25583 on the floor. I actually didn't complete that process, so it's still on the floor. We're going to consider that on the floor.
Okay.
Okay. I need a, how about this, I will motion to amend to appoint Jacob Amos. I need a second to that motion to amend. Seconded, need discussion on the motion to amend? I see none. If you'll take the role on the motion to amend.
Nichols.
Aye.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Six oh.
The motion as amended is on the floor, appointing Mr. Amos as the council member. Any further comment, other than congratulations again? We're going to do this in a second.
Thank you.
First person to get appointed twice in the same room.
Right. History.
I'll decide, Mr. Mayor, very much looking forward to working with you, and you have the best first name on the council.
I agree, and I think you have the best first name in the world.
Thank you very much.
Stop.
I'm glad they're not sitting next to each other. If the city clerk will take the role on 25583, as amended, appointing Mr. Amos.
Did we not just do that?
I'll do it again.
That was to amend it, this is voting up.
All right.
As amended.
Nichols.
Aye.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Six oh.
City Clerk, I promise one of these days I will get this right.
Okay.
So congratulations.
Thank you all.
All right. I need a motion and a second again to put ordinance 25616 onto the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions on 616? Go ahead.
I'll just say in response to the, you know, it was a while ago before we had to take things off the floor and put those things on the floor, the citizen statement. You're right, this is not a perfect solution. This is one of the levers that we can pull to have this as an option, but this does not mean we're stopping looking at this. If it was easy, it would be done. If there was an option that was presented to us that would follow state law and take this burden off in a lot easier fashion, we would do it. This is a very complicated issue for special assessments, and we're, we have continued to push our staff for any options that we have. So I hear you, we all hear you, and we're not, this doesn't mean that we're done working on that. But one of the things that was important for us, and I believe it was council member Ford who put this together, or as an idea, put it forward my first year of council, was he wanted to see this, and so I apologize that it has taken this long, but it's one of the levers that we can pull, so I'm going to vote for it to pull it.
Councilman Flom.
I want to thank Long Range Finance. We have two members of Long Range Finance sitting up here tonight. And with the work that they did, knowing that, again, to Councilmember Builo's point, this is an imperfect process. Personally, I don't want to be done looking at this, too. If there's any levers we can pull, I'd like to pull them. As I mentioned in the last meeting, this is something that is unique when it comes to annexations, and I know people didn't ask to be annexed. The problem is that Wisconsin, as a regulated utility state, there's a lot of laws that we have to follow of that. So I would encourage you to keep in contact with us, contact your state representatives about this, too, at the state level. And I'm going to move to support this. Is it perfect? No, but I want to do everything that we can within our power right now to try to make it a little bit better.
Mr. Nichols, go right ahead.
Thanks. I agree with what's been set up here, that just because this is hard, doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that we should address it. So we do know that there are rules and limits to what we're doing. We also know that we, as a council, have been particularly strong in advocating to our legislature to change some of those rules. My guess is it doesn't matter how much we look into this, because you're living it every day, you know more about this topic than we do. And so I encourage you, if you've identified ways that cities should be requesting changes to state law so that we can deal with this in a better way, tell us what that is, because it's our job to advocate to our state representatives as well. So you have all of our emails, please send us all emails. And I'm glad we're making changes. I think incremental progress is progress, so let's not wait for the perfect. But definitely continue advocating for yourselves so that we can advocate for you, too.
Any further comments? If not, if you'll take the role on 25616.
Nichols.
Aye.
Amos.
Present.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Ordinance 25617, amend Chapter 14 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to stormwater management, to clarify and update language, and to update provisions pertaining to post-construction stormwater management requirements. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? I see none. If you'll take the role.
Nichols.
Aye.
Amos.
Aye.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Seven oh.
Resolution 25618, amend capital improvement plan to include funding for the I-41 pedestrian bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Flom, go first.
Because the funding from the, for this bridge and the federal portion of it came from discretionary federal funding, I will be voting present on the matter.
All right, I see no other buttons. When you're ready, if you'll take the role on 25618.
Nichols.
Aye.
Amos.
Present.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Present.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
And Mugrower.
Aye.
Five two.
Moving on, council discussion, direction to the city manager and future agenda items. We have 55A as direction to staff regarding preferred concept for Lake Shore Drive reimagination. James, James, before, or Mr. Robby, before you get started, is there any way you could have Oshkosh Media have?
Jake's got some graphics ready to go.
Appreciate that very much. Those are very helpful.
Had a conversation with him late this afternoon to make sure we had some graphics.
Appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
So yeah, the graphic that Jake has up on the screen right now shows a 3D modeled view of the two concepts that we've been advancing, as shown from the lake. These concepts have been presented to the Advisory Park Board, to the Museum Arts and Culture Board, and through a poll call survey. All three of those recommended moving forward with Concept One. Our design landscape architect has asked us to get direction from council so they can stop advancing two designs and just focus on one design to be more productive and more efficient utilizing the funds that we have available. I don't know if you want me to go over it at all, or?
Mr. Robinson, go right ahead.
No, I don't have any, I've read through the packet. I think we've gone through this process for a while now. I want to thank engineering for getting this together. I think both concepts turned out a lot better than I thought they were going to. I'm perfectly okay with going with Concept One. It sounds like that's where Parks Board and some of our survey results came in. So yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out. This concept's both look great. I'm happy the way they turned out. I'm happy the way our front door of Lake Winnebago kind of looks, and I think it's going to go a long way to kind of ameliorating some of those issues that people brought up with the Clearwells to begin with, so thanks again.
Mr. Flom.
Thank you. I'm also going to go with Concept One. I like the fact that it opens up more of the lake shore to the public instead of that setback there. I agree. I think the Parks Board did a good job in deciding, you know, their preferred concept, Concept One. And for the record, I'm on the Parks Board, so I agree with their decision on that front. The fact that planting more trees, removing less trees, I think is a good mix overall. And again, just opening up more of that lakefront in terms of trails. I'm a runner, I like trails. I'm going to use those trails myself, and I'm sure many, many other people will, so I'm for Concept One. Thank you.
Concept One, no further comment.
Mr. Nichols.
Thanks. Just from an infrastructure, this is critical infrastructure that is critical, I was going to say that better. This is critical infrastructure for our city, and so we're talking about landscape design. I just want to make sure that from a city perspective, there isn't an advantage to one over the other in terms of access for that infrastructure before we decide on one concept over the other.
Honestly, for access to the Clearwell structures itself, Concept One would provide a little better access with that road being closer in the event that we did need to, you know, bring equipment up to them from the outside of the fence. So it is, I would say, maybe slightly better. You know, we could function with either of them, but, you know, from being able to access the Clearwells to do any structural work on those structures, you know, if there's some concrete work or other things that need to be done in the future, certainly Concept One with the street a little closer would make it a little bit easier for us in the long term.
Okay, and in terms of the infrastructure that is under, under what we're talking about, under the landscaping, that there's no difference between the two either?
No, primarily what we're looking at is utilities that are crossing. We don't have a lot, you know, that run with Lake Shore Drive. We've got, certainly have some things that cross it. There'll be a new storm sewer outfall from the site crossing it. There's the intake pipes that cross it. So there are a lot of things that cross it, mostly at a perpendicular, not much that runs with it.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Spanbar.
Yeah, I just want to also thank all the staff who have worked on this. I think both of these concepts look great. I did have some folks reach out. And just curious, James, your thoughts on, you know, we've got these concepts here. There seems to be folks kind of leaning toward Concept One. Obviously, these are a plan or a concept. How rigid or fixed is the details of that? And is there any kind of play capabilities with the elements of the design? So, and just as an example would be, some folks reached out about just the amount of impervious surface. Might there be a way to include something that would be more pervious? Or something about, I guess, maybe some specific trees? Could, could the path be routed slightly to help just save a couple more trees versus eliminating them? Those are just, I think, some, and I know that gets into the details of actually implementing that project.
Yeah, at this point, I would consider this to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a 40% to 50% design completion. So there's a lot of, those level of details that honestly haven't been looked at yet. Because it's not something you look at until you get much further along. And that's why we're looking at getting that direction tonight, so we can just focus on advancing one of them to iron out those kind of finer details before we finish.
Great, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
Option one would be my preference as well.
So I think I heard a lot of Concept Ones.
Concept One.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Future agenda items, meetings and workshops. We tentatively have a special meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council next Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:00 PM in this room. We have a workshop ahead of the December 9th council meeting. That is going to be regarding alcohol licensing and gambling machines. Just a reminder of as much information as early as possible to allow us time to navigate any questions we may have during that session. And then a workshop on our favorite, the Menominee Park Train, January 13th, 2026. That is before the council meeting as well at 5:00 PM. Any council member announcements or statements that you'd like to give? Otherwise, city manager? Mr. Amos?
Well, I just want to, I just want to thank Oshkosh, of course. I want to thank you guys for voting me in today. It truly means a lot to me, and I'm really looking forward to just rolling my sleeves up and getting to the work ahead, so thank you all.
Brad, I think he pushed his button like 17 meetings faster than you did.
Quiet you.
Not very nice. City manager, anything on the current initiatives that you'd like to share?
I have nothing.
I think Deputy Mayor has a motion for us.
I do. What am I moving here? I moved convene in a closed session pursuant to Section 18, or 19.851E of the Wisconsin State Statute where competitive bargain reasons require a closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the potential redevelopment and/or acquisition of a property located at 101 Commerce Street and 201 Pearl Avenue in the City of Oshkosh, commonly known as the city center.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Before we take the role, background material was provided to council. It was included in the agenda packet this evening regarding the related to the closed session. Does council have any questions related to that material that was provided? I see none. If you can take the role, I'm going into closed session.
Nichols.
Aye.
Amos.
Aye.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Seven oh.
Take a motion and a second adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.